Well, good afternoon. Welcome to the Advent Study for Grace in Trinity Methodist Churches here in Hartford City. I'm Pastor John. Pastor Jeannie's down there on the corner. And this is a four-session study, so we will finish on the Wednesday before Christmas. And for the next four weeks, we'll meet at 2:30 here or 7 o'clock at the Trinity Boardroom. Either location is fine if your schedule demands that. It's nice to see everyone here. For those of you at home, there's coffee here on the bar. You'll have to take care of that yourself. Right now, there isn't anyone watching at home, so I don't have to explain that you won't be able to see the video because the DVD player in my computer, it won't work today, but it did yesterday when I practiced. But anyway, so we will be watching. There's short videos in each of our sessions. They're about 12 to 15 minutes long, and then there will be lots of discussion. And if you didn't hear, there is homework for every session, including this session. And so that would have been the introduction and chapter one. So for next time, since we'll be doing session two, you can just start at the beginning of the book and read clear to the end of chapter two, if you haven't been there. It's good reading. It's not bad at all. It's not painful. And that's a leader guide, so I don't know how much that'll help you.
Answer book. The answers are...
Well, there really aren't any answers. They're just questions. Unfortunately, but you do all I know have a book that has the answers in it.
Yes, we do.
Sometimes it says Holy Bible on the front or other words. But if you, there are additional books available. If you need a book, just let me know and I can get you one. There may still be some on the...
Not too many, but there is one or two yet.
In the back of Grace, then there's one or two at Trinity too, so we can get you a book if you don't have one. So Rita Bell, she's right over there. Raise your hand, Rita.
Can I take everybody?
Well, I don't know. What about those people out there?
You said the what's in it.
Oh, but there could be later. But Rita Bell asked a question.
I read.
She read a question from there, and the question is was...
Are angels real and does it matter?
Are angels real and does it matter? Well, if you say that angels are real, I think that it answers the second part of the question as well. Because if they're real, then they matter. If they aren't real, they don't. So does anybody remember a time in your life when you felt that you were called directly or talked to directly by... What's that word, Angelos mean? If you did your reading, you would probably know this, but I think I'll apologize to the people for Trinity. I can't remember whether I told you the reading assignment or not. I can't remember. But in the reading, it talks about Angelos and what it means, and it's a Greek word, and it means messenger. So messenger of who? Messenger of God. And so throughout the Bible, the angels have played quite a role in being messengers for God. And I'm not sure about all of these that are in the leader guide. There's like 25 of them. Sometimes we've called some of those Christophanes, appearances of Christ. And so that wouldn't necessarily be an angel, but can anybody remember the appearance of an angel in the Old Testament?
To guard the Garden of Eden.
That's going back to the beginning. Yeah, back to the beginning.
That wasn't necessarily the good.
Who are you speaking of?
Who, what?
You said an angel in the Garden of Eden. Who are you speaking of?
I don't know. God put an angel there. I thought to stand guard so they couldn't get back in.
Okay, so that's toward the end after they've been in, after God has thrown them out of the Garden of Eden, and he put a guard there so that they couldn't re-enter. Any other times an angel might have appeared?
Sodom and Gomorrah.
Sodom and Gomorrah, and even just a little bit before that, when angels appeared to, at least a couple of angels appeared to Abra. And in Hebrews, that event is described or is used as a warning to remind us that be careful because some people have entertained angels without even knowing it. Because those two gentlemen, plus the third that appeared, are spoken of as being the first two as angels, and the third one is, might be one of those Christophanes, the appearance of Christ in the Old Testament. So there's lots of times that angels appear, and the angels play a pretty pivotal role in the New Testament as well. Can anybody think of an appearance of the angels in the New Testament or an angel in the New Testament?
Angels we have heard on high.
So visiting shepherds, visiting Zachariah, visiting Joseph, visiting Mary. Pretty, perhaps that's why that's a fitting subject for Advent, because the angels played a pivotal role in the Advent, and we all remember what Advent stands for, what what the time of Advent is for, don't we?
Preparation.
Preparation. What are we preparing for?
Christ. God incarnate.
God incarnate. When Christ comes back into the world, and we're preparing ourselves, not because God needs it, but because we need it. We need to get realigned and reminded of all that God is doing and, you know, if get our hearts in the right position, you know, because I don't know if you've noticed it, but we live in a pretty commercial culture. And, you know, if Christmas is talked about by most people, it's not talked about as the birth of Christ. It's talked about as an opportunity to get stuff. And so in this time, we probably all need to remember the season and why we're celebrating the season. And so these four weeks, I think, will help us get lined up and get focused on God. One of the things that we're going to do is we're going to sing.
Yeah.
Yes, we are. We're going to sing during our Advent study.
You're gonna sing?
No. Oh, you don't deserve that. Yes. I may sing quietly, but that's what, we're going to have a song each week. And the songs are, we might call them Christmas songs or Christmas carols, but they're, they'll all be Christ-centered songs about the season. And I can't really think anything else to say. It's an introduction. Does anyone else? Pastor Jeannie, would you like to say?
No, you're doing good.
You want to sing at the beginning or at the end?
I like to do the start.
Okay, so I have to figure out how to share my screen. Hey, angels is even in the name of that. And please sing along. Sing out. You're back.
That's good.
I think you all did a wonderful job, and then you all sat on this, on that side of me, so I sang that way. You were all properly rewarded.
We appreciate that.
All right. For those of you who had the book in time and you could read the introduction and read the first chapter, both good, I didn't really have any problems with anything, but it's possible that as we read along, this book was written by a retired pastor from a United Methodist Church in Texas, that we may find one or two instances where there's a little bit more liberality than we find normal. But even when we see that, we can remember that we know what the Bible says, because we spend time in the Bible reading it. So when somebody has a difference of opinion, we don't have to have a big argument about it, especially, I mean, she's right there on the back, but that is close, we don't probably get to her. But I just wanted to tell you that there may come upon a time when you'll find something that, I hope it makes you scratch your head, is what I really hope, and wonder, well, is that really what we believe? And if you have questions, you can bring them up during this conversation. I think we'll go ahead and start the video, if that's okay. Oh, yeah, I keep, I have meaning to do that. No, we don't need to pray. It's a Bible study. Would you join me in prayer? Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this time that you give us to gather together, not to gather together to worry about the seasons and worry about everything else, but Lord, to approach you once again, to approach you recognizing that you are the most excellent God, that our goal of coming together today should also be to bring you glory. Our goal should be to remember what you have done for us, and especially what you did for us when you sent your son into the world, to live, to teach, finally to die, but then especially to be resurrected, showing your stamp of approval on everything that he did, that we can trust in the word of God as it's written, in the word that we find in the New Testament as it's written. And so, Lord, as we continue our meeting today, I would ask that you would surround us with your presence, that your Holy Spirit would be upon us, and that, Lord, you would continue to pour yourselves out into our lives through your Spirit, and yes, as you direct through your angels. Lord, be with us now as we continue this day. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen. I know where it is.
It's up there.
Christmas, my mind takes me back to the memories of Christmas from my childhood of decorating the tree with this funny aluminum tinsel that my mom would want to hung just right on every branch. And also, I remember like one of the earliest Christmas, I was around six years old, and we would open, when I was growing up, we would open our presents on Christmas Eve instead of Christmas morning. And I remember one Christmas, my mom saying to me, you know, Santa's gonna be here soon, and you know, just in case we happen to catch him in the house, we should probably go upstairs and make sure we look nice. So we went up and combed my hair, and while we were upstairs, all of a sudden I hear from downstairs, oh, oh, oh! And ran downstairs as fast as I could to see my dad standing by the fireplace, saying, oh my gosh, Susan, you just missed me. Just went up the chimney. But when I think of Christmas, of course, I always think too about my own children's Christmas memories, taking them to see Santa Claus, shopping for them, taking them to their first candlelight service and singing Silent Night, lifting our candles high. And also, of course, reading the Christmas stories to them every Christmas Eve, reading about the angels that appear to Mary and Joseph and the shepherds. Our memories take us back to memories of Christmas, but we can't go far without thinking of the angels of Christmas. In the New Testament, there's sort of one word for angels. It's called Angelos, which can mean or means messenger. So angels come as messengers of God throughout the Bible. In the Old Testament, there are many different words to describe these heavenly beings. Sometimes angels are called messengers. Sometimes they're just called men, because it's hard to distinguish. They look like human beings. Sometimes they're called heavenly hosts, meaning it's an army of celestial beings. And sometimes they're called heavenly beings. The same messages that the angels bring in the Old Testament, those angels bring some of the same messages in the New Testament. And we're supposed to make that connection with these stories, that the God of Israel, who was faithful in the past, who sent messengers to give hope and protection to God's people, that same God is still active in the lives of the people in these New Testament stories. And that same God is active in our faces, for. A lot of people would think that if we're going to be talking about the angels of Christmas, we would start off with an angel visiting Mary, or maybe the angel visiting Joseph and the birth of Jesus. But that's not where the birth narratives and the gospel would begin. They begin with an angel visiting Zachariah. Zachariah is a priest from the Order of Abijah, which means he's a descendant of Aaron, which is a priestly family. And the Bible says that Elizabeth is also a descendant of Aaron. So, and that they are, of course, they are very pious. They are righteous. They have kept all of the laws. They're good people, but they are getting on in years, and Elizabeth is barren. Well, at this point, the hearers of Luke's story bells would be going off in their head because they know the stories of the plans. They know the stories in the Old Testament. And they would already be thinking, oh, my goodness, we know a story of an old barren couple of Abraham and Sarah, and guess what happens to them? God provides them with a child. God provides lots of barren women with children in the Old Testament, whose children have great importance. The people who are listening to the story are saying, we know a baby's coming, but how is this going to happen? So let's hear the story. So Zachariah, his order has been called up to go to Jerusalem to serve at the temple. It's a lot like my church. We have a lot of ministers on staff, but we take turns rotating in the clerical roles, so not one person is overburdened. And you always have someone working in church. The same was true for the temple, but during the time of Zachariah, there was thought to be about 8,000 priests. And so he has been chosen, his order has been chosen to go and serve at the temple. And he's had this honor. They've cast lots, and it's decided that Zachariah will be the one to go into the holy place to offer the incense sacrifice. With 8,000 priests, this is probably, he may have never done this before, so it's a very honored thing. My guess is that he has made sure that he has taken his best clerical vestments, and in the outer court of the temple, there are people who are waiting outside praying while Zachariah goes in to make his incense offering. And as he's there, he goes in and immediately, in front of him, he's just going about his business, doing his job, when then there appeared to him an angel of the Lord standing at the right side of the incense altar. When Zachariah saw him, he was terrified, as most people are. If they see an angel, they're terrified. And fear overwhelmed him. But the angel said to him, do not be afraid, Zachariah, for your prayer has been heard. Do not be afraid, Zachariah. And the angel, every time an angel comes to a person in the birth narratives of Jesus, the first thing the angel says to them is, do not be afraid. But he says to Zachariah, your prayer has been heard. Your wife Elizabeth will bear you a son, and you will name him John, which means God is gracious. You will have joy and gladness, and many will rejoice at his birth, or he will be great in the side of the Lord. This child is going to be special. He is going to turn many of the people of Israel to the Lord their God. He is going to turn the hearts of parents to their children. He is going to turn the disobedience to the wisdom of the righteous. This child is going to grow up, to get people back on the right path toward God, so that, this angel says, to make ready the people prepared for the Lord. He's going to prepare the way for Jesus. And so Zachariah, of course, is a little bewildered by this, because he and his wife are getting on up in age. And he, it's hard for him to believe, even though he knows the stories of the Old Testament. He knows about Abraham and Sarah. He knows about the faithfulness of God. He says to the angel, how will I know this is so, for I'm an old man and my life is getting on in years? He doesn't quite believe what the angel has said. And so the angel says to him, I am Gabriel. I stand in the presence of God. And of course, Zachariah would know who Gabriel was. Gabriel visited Daniel. Gabriel was the same angel that went to Daniel. He says, I stand in the presence of God, which means God has sent me as a messenger, and you should heed my words as you were heeding God's words, because I stand in the presence of God. I had been sent to speak to you to bring you this good news, but now because you did not believe my words, which will be fulfilled in their time, you will become mute, unable to speak, until the day these things occur. He goes home where Elizabeth discovers that she is going to have a baby. Of course, their child is John the Baptist. And what, what I think is important for them is that they spend this time in seclusion. They have their own sort of gestational time, this time of Advent for them, where they now can contemplate what God has done in their lives, what God has done in the lives of their ancestors, and how God is going to work through them in the future, what God has told them. And I think why, what this is important for me is to realize that sometimes in our lives, I think all of us are struck mute by doubt. We either can't believe what God is doing in our lives, and we're speechless because of it. But sometimes I think we become mute because we do know the blessings that God has given us in our lives. And maybe we are afraid or embarrassed to talk about them to other people, afraid that people won't believe us, or afraid that people might scoff at us. So I think Elizabeth and Zachariah's story helps us to understand how we need to find our own voice and be able to speak up about what God is doing in our life. And also in this season of Advent, perhaps like Elizabeth and Zachariah, will be important for us to take some time to live in that silence, to contemplate what God has done in our past, what God is doing now, and how we can find our voice to speak about what God is doing in our lives, in the lives of others. I love it when Gabriel says to Zachariah, I am Gabriel. I stand in the presence of God. Gabriel's message reminds us that nothing is impossible with God, that God is with us, that God is calling on us to find our voice, and that we can believe what the messengers have to say to us.
Lighting tech. I'd start by asking, anybody remember some a story about your earliest remembrance of Christmas? Anything that speaks to you, and even in your advanced age, oh wait, even in our advanced age, we that you still remember? I remember having a silver Christmas tree. And did you have the lights, branches like that?
Have the colored lights.
Or what the color wheel?
We'd eat the living room at Christmas time.
Eat the living room at Christmas time? I didn't remember that, but...
Well, that was for your time.
Yeah, we always went to Christmas Eve services. Our family always did. So when I go to churches and people are like, well, that's our family time. It's not Christmas Eve. It's not church time. I'm like, what do you mean? Or, and some, you know, folks have Christmas services, you know, on Christmas Day too. Some churches had that. It was like, so, but we've always blessed, and again, sung my whole life, so being able to sing almost every Christmas Eve as well, some wonderful songs, so being a part of that.
My early memory is that it wasn't the first time, but I remember lying. Because mom and dad had gone someplace, and they drove up, let the car drive away, and mom's wandering around, they were in the house. I think I was about in the fourth grade. Well, Christmas came around and I don't know why my mother or my father asked me, had I peeked in the back of the car and saw what was in there?
I didn't see that puppy.
Well, I don't know why the question came up. Maybe I was being observed. Any rate, I made a very quick young decision and it centered on situation ethics. If I say yes, I will ruin their Christmas. And I chose to lie. I didn't see anything. Well, of course, I remember that. And that's all they ever said about it. And I tried to look surprised.
That's funny, Ron. I have a similar story and I, it was before I was in fourth grade, so I'm not quite sure. But my mom asked if me and my older brother Larry, if we had looked under the bed in her bedroom. And I don't even remember answering, but all those gifts went to the church. So I looked no more.
What a lesson. Uh, I, I thought it was, how about the situation she described where her mother had her go upstairs to get ready for when Santa Claus came? Then dad's downstairs pretend, pretending to be Santa Claus. I mean, is that something that you would participate in?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
I was thinking, how, how did they get everything out so fast?
It's a good long interret and.
My brother had to play Santa Claus for, uh, I think it was the Rotarians. And so where I used to live was right across the road, but the terminal was where I worked and I worked with my brother. So he was putting on the Santa Claus outfit to go to the Rotary meeting. And he said, hey, how about me stopping at your house? And I'm, and I'm at work and I said, okay, I'll call Greg, who is eight years younger than, I mean, older than Nikki. So I called him and I said, make sure that you're in Nikki's room by the window playing a game. She had kind of like a, a chest that sat there. I said, be playing a game there. Uncle Larry's dressed up as Santa Claus and he's going to knock on the window. When he knocks on the window, do not let Nikki go to the door, say, let's call mom. So Larry can get away. And you know what? I can't remember how old she was. We were at my dad's house. And she was, she was thinking that there wasn't a Santa Claus because people told her that, but she had seen Santa Claus. And I can't remember how, I, I think my brother said, well, did it sound like this? And she said, it did. And then she goes, oh, was it you? And that's a wonderful, you know, that's a wonderful memory too. Yeah, I would have taken stuff with that.
I think mine, John, would be, we didn't have a fireplace until I was like in junior high, we finally had a fireplace to hang our stockings. And so they were always just left um, by our door in the hallway.
Oh.
And so my brother had, of course, been a part of it all, being the oldest. And so he would be so anxious that they were there and knew that they were there, that he would wake up at two or three in the morning or not get to sleep. Because he was so excited that we were going to find those stockings. And so he would wake us up somewhere around four or five o'clock. But our stockings always had a whole lot of, not just food, uh, always had the orange in the toe, but um, lots of little games and crossword. And so we would play for maybe two or three hours before we had a we couldn't get our parents up until like seven o'clock. And so we would play and play and play together in uh, one of our rooms. And so that was, that was pretty special.
Did you do that with your kids then? Um, something similar?
Yeah, as far as having, yeah, a time, but yeah, I, with our kids, I just remember, and I know mom started it, but I don't know when, um, the Advent candles. And so they would play with their stockings and then bring them downstairs. But they knew that they couldn't wake us yet. And when they did, the coffee had to be ready and the coffee cake in the oven that I had put, you know, in the fridge and and they would put it in the oven and we had to light the Advent candles before they could open the first gift. And so yeah, we kept that going the whole time. We still do it now. So we, the grandkids. That's always been special because they help part of the story. And it's interesting because we lost the lit, you know, the liturgy that we had used initially for a few years, but they remembered their role. This is the candle of the lives. They would have a downed hat, but that was their part that they got to say in it. So that was pretty special.
Lady in the video said, God is still active. We live our lives that way?
Oh, yeah. Before you get too far, I think it's in the introduction. But when you come up with a new Bible study, I always wonder, you know, I've been around all these years, you know, uh, you can't surprise me. I read the whole book, even the study notes. But man, I got it. She came up with an idea I had never heard before. It's worth the price of the book. And I understand they're kind of expensive. And that is in this salvation story, when God has a plan and things have to happen and they can't happen because Elizabeth is barren. And so the different times, when, when things come to a halt, when in my life, it's all barrenness. And I'm, I don't know what to do. That's usually my prayer. God, what am I going to do? I can't go on. The story won't unfold right. And, and that, that whole thing, I mean, if she didn't have John the Baptist, he couldn't be the, you know, the forerunner of Jesus. The whole thing would have come to a halt. And an angel is there to make it happen. And I think back over my life, you know, more than once, deep trouble. And you know, I can fix this. My first thought, what can I do? I don't know. I just don't know. Uh, she, um, you know, she wanted to leave room. Like, you know, the Sadducees, uh, they don't like the resurrection. They don't like the angel. The Pharisees, it's just, you got the progressives and liberals back then. Can Jesus relate to both of them? Yeah. So, you know, here they are and got all these differences. And then she brings up, well, maybe you can only believe in a human visitation. An angel comes to you and helps you in your time of need. Maybe that's an angel that you don't know, but maybe that's as far as you can go. On the other hand, maybe you, you've seen or heard or you know, an angel in the room. So you got the human, divine, and then the, I'd add the dream bit. Cause was that a dream? I don't think so. It sure answered my question in my time of need. So, so you know, I didn't, I, I got off on a good start. I wasn't even through the introduction. I said, this gal knows that I need to know. Glad to be here. And I'm glad for the church paying for the book.
Well, she also mentioned in the book, since Ron brought up barren women, I was going to talk about it a little bit later, but uh, what is the significance of barren women? Not just in the story of Elizabeth and Zachariah, but throughout the Bible. I mean, comes to mind Hagar. And comes to mind, you know, Sarai and you know, some of their children. Rachel had trouble conceiving. What's the significance? Who's that the lesson for?
All of us, because it's a miracle.
And you know, maybe we become kind of jaded to miracles. But those people, I mean, here's this eighty wom, eighty year old woman in Sarai's case and I don't remember if it specifically says how old Elizabeth is, but an eighty year old woman who conceives and that's, that's proof of God in action. So is God still active? You know, God, God gives us signs too, to show that he's still active in our life. And did anybody think of any signs that God's given in your life that he's still active and still relevant in our world? That's a word that we like to use some. Relevant. We talk about things being relevant and changing our scriptures so that it's relevant. But how has God been relevant? How has he been active in your lives? Have you gotten like Ron was talking about a message? Where you don't have any idea how you could have gotten it other than it had to be of God?
When I was getting my masters, I would, you know, four kids and working all day and then going to Ball State in the evening and we lived in Huntington. Um, and it was a long drive home because the classes were six thirty to ten. Um, and one time I, I don't remember what town it was now, but I realized that I was in the town I didn't even know. And it was not, you know, something on my route. And I just stopped and rolled down my window and realized that I had to have been asleep, you know, and taken that exit. And I just felt the presence of the Lord that I had a purpose. You know, so I rolled down the window to get the air and also thank him for, you know, because there's no way.
Waking you up.
Well, for waking me up and then getting me, you know, off the interstate to the safe, wherever it was. Um, yeah, so that's that was one of my miracles that really caught my attention because there was no way I was in control.
Certainly the issue with my part.
Yeah.
Just coincidence that you were in the hospital?
Everything was put in place. I mean, where I was, what happened. I, we have one, um, all hands on deck button, call button, cardiac button, whatever back there. And then I fell about two feet away from it or went down about two feet away from it. Fell on top of the nurse who was with me and that she was able to get out from underneath me, which is no easy task. And pushed that button and just that, you know, even the people in the hospital that day were like, they don't even have any patients back there. They doing a drill? They really thought it was a drill until they came around the corner. So certainly for me.
And you know what? Us in the community. Because you guys are so well thought of in this community, especially in the community of the hospital. We all said, oh my God.
We said a lot of oh my's. I'm still saying oh my. Yeah, I appreciate that.
Well, I think that's what Zachariah and Sarah, no, Zachariah and Elizabeth.
And that's how rumors get started.
Yeah. Would have been very important in their community at the time too. You know, Ron talks about keeping the story going. God intervening by sending the messenger to, you know, to Zachariah and then to Elizabeth, facilitating Elizabeth getting, getting pregnant. But that's such an important message to the whole community too. Because they've been, you know, essentially without a message from God for four hundred years. And that idea, God is still active, was a lesson not just for Zachariah and Elizabeth, but it was for the whole community. That God's still there. I mean, they, they must have thought a little something because they were worried when Zachariah didn't come back out when they expected him. And he ended up spending a lot more time in there than they expected, but you know, they, they were concerned. Yet God's not just writing into his story. He's writing into all those people's stories because those two would have been important to the community where they were. And the whole idea of a barren woman, you know, they they immediately recognized, wait, we've heard this story before. God used this plot dialogue, we could say, before.
And Zachariah didn't get to tell that story, you know, again, he was silenced. And there, there's, there's lots about the, the story of step two. So assuming that she was older and through menopause, so don't expect. Zachariah is told, you're going to have a child. So again, the scripture says he goes back and was with her. So again, he had to say too, we're going to have a child. I believe that when we have, you know, intimacy, we're going to have a child. So believing all of that, it wasn't, you know, it, it's all done. He believed all that and, and continued on. And so he had to say yes, even though you know, you've never had a child. We think you're too old. You know, again, probably have gone through the physical thing. He believed, she believed it's all possible that God could do that. So when God speaks, believing that it's going to be possible. Whatever God states about that, uh, when we read a scripture and it speaks to our hearts, or the song speaks to our hearts, when an angel speaks to our hearts, believing that it's possible, but then we need to do our part too. So that's what I thought Zachariah needed to do. Elizabeth needed to do that so they could have that next step. And then getting to share that, but also having that silence for a time. It's like, again, that pause, that thinking about it, that, you know, like, okay. But watching God work, he couldn't continue to share. He had to wait till it actually, this child is born, then he could speak when they named him John. And now, and he gets to tell the story. So obviously he gets to tell that. So for us, um, being having that time to pause sometimes too, is, you know, is important. So what we can be able to listen to God and then share how God's at work. So.
Because we're more likely to speak into the silence because we abhor the silence. And so we don't give ourselves a chance to listen to what's go, what's actually going on here. I wrote down, was was Zachariah being struck dumb? Was that a punishment or was that a blessing?
Blessing in disguise.
And you know, he, he's got this story. I mean, an angel appearing. He's in the Holy of Holies and he's in, you know, he's in this place. And yet he can't tell anybody about it.
Yet.
Yeah. He has to be quiet for nine months.
God's perfect timing.
It might have been a form of protection for you.
Yes.
How so?
So if he would have told a story, they would say, well, you're pretty out of it.
Well, is that our first response when someone tells us a story?
Yeah.
That's beyond. I mean, to, to think, well, they're nuts. When Rita starts talking and we say, well, she's not. Oh, I think it, sometimes I say that. And fear of angels. Over and over again, we see that. Why do you suppose people are afraid of angels when they see them?
Oh, I got another story. I don't know who told me this, but I believed this long before I came to church. And that was a death angel. And that's scary to a little kid.
That makes sense.
I know better now. Angel comes.
Per, perhaps it's not so much something to fear as we
Yeah, out of here.
Imagine when we were younger.
Well, I've heard that, I've heard that story from two or three people that they've been very sick and they see an angel and they've reached out. Or in one case, he's, he saw heaven and then came back. And I mean, those are three people that I would trust what they said and.
and matter of fact, the, the guy that went into heaven and then saw heaven come back, he told his wife, don't mourn for me when I'm gone. He was very sick, expecting the pass. He said, it's beautiful. I'll see you. You know, and that's a great message to hear when you know what the inevitable is going to be.
Well, and for people that visit people in that situation, so often they say, I'm ready and I'm content, I'm at peace. And, you know, that's, that's a great blessing for other people to hear, hear them say that. Talked about this before Susan Baki, I saw her the day before she died and she was, she was still telling people about her Jesus with every breath that she had. And but, but yet the shepherds were afraid. Daniel was afraid when the angels visited Daniel. Why is that so often? I, I, for us, we probably just see it's all CGI. Would we even believe that it's not computer generated? But in their case, they, can you imagine being an angel out in the wilderness? Excuse me, a shepherd out in the wilderness? And the heaven is filled with light? And, you know, you hear that voice and it's a voice from the clouds and I mean, how could you not be afraid?
Zachariah is in the holiest of holy places and he's still afraid when he sees the angel. Again, the, the images of angels, how big was it, the surprise of something just existing when there was nothing there? I mean, there's all kinds of things of why you would react. Because we're not expect to see something physical, something spiritual, something powerful, you know, something holy. There, there, there's all kinds of different aspects of an angel, you know, it's not just a little white thing with wings. Isn't that cute? We, we don't know for sure exactly what it was, but that there, there's so much about an angel because we're not holy, we, we're not as spiritual, we're not as powerful a, as an angel would be coming from heaven or the, or the message that we're having to listen to. Um, so that there's a lot about an angel all of a sudden appearing that would be the shock or, or the fright or, you know, upcoming to that. And praise the Lord, the other folks again, this, um, Rita shared, you know, have seen angels at different times uh, and had a piece about it as well. But when they're giving the message that we hear like from, from Zachariah, he's, he's giving a specific message and it's a great message. You're gonna have a child and this child is not just an ordinary little thing. It, it, this child is gonna do extraordinary work for the Lord. Um, so the, the challenge that he has too, and accepting the message, believing the message. There's something that we need to learn from as well. God's gonna come to us, all of us at different times, whether he actually sends an angel or the word or song or people or a circumstance, he's gonna send people to us or send things to us to give us a message as well, just like Zachariah got a message of something special for us yet to do. This Advent, this Christmas, years to come, he's gonna send things to us, speak to us in special ways.
And he sent something to Zachariah and something to Elizabeth. Anybody remember what the name John means, at least here? God is gracious. Because John was a gift to them in their old age. Something special. God is gracious and I, I think, uh, God wants to continue to bless us. From time to time, we have to be quiet and listen though, which is hard sometimes. Because we can't stand silence.
Is there anything in the scriptures that talk about, did, did the parents get to see John the Baptist? As the, the messenger then as the, you know, sharing the story, we don't know for sure. Did they get to know more of the, what's happening? Probably not since they were older, but or trusting that it was gonna happen, that'd be interesting to know. Did they get to know how great he turned out to be, what he did? Pointed towards Jesus Christ and, you know, and told people the hard message, you're sinners. You need to turn and repent. Another thing I wrote with it from the video is that God is still active. And so for us to, to remember that and to listen to other people in, as well as look forward to seeing how God is still active.
And we started earlier talking about Hebrews and the warning to be careful because some have been visited by angels without even knowing it and that makes me think that angels can appear just about like any person might appear to us too. And we may not recognize the angel.
An Egyptian woman in the hospital. The, her ending story.
Yeah, if you, uh, when you do your reading for this week, the last story is about a cancer patient at M D Anderson in Houston. And I'll just read, I won't give you the whole story away, but I'll just read one thing. Uh, he went on to say, we get stories like this all the time here at M D Anderson. You just experienced an angel sighting. And so to me, that means that we should keep our eyes open, our ears open, talk less, listen more. Listen. Because we don't know who's God is going to send to us. And maybe all intentionally, instead of speaking through the Holy Spirit, send an angel into our lives to see whether we'll listen. And maybe we'll have a response like Zachariah, you know, really? Come on, we're old. And I mean, he had to know the story of Abram and Sarai, but he still, well, that we're too old for that. I mean, I know some of you are in your seventies or eighties. Do you want a message like that? But would it get your attention?
Can you imagine how the community would look at you today if that happened?
We do live in a time when, uh, maybe not that old, but women in their fifties and sixties have had children because they had medical manipulation. To allow that to be possible, but I mean, without anything like that. How about Gabriel? I am Gabriel and what did he say?
I'm in the presence of God.
I stand in the presence of God.
What a line for your resume.
And yet if you go back to Daniel and you read, because Gabriel went to help Daniel and Daniel was afraid. And then Daniel, we, we find out later that Gabriel has been delayed and he needed a greater angel to come and help him in the situation he found himself in. So I guess Daniel and, uh, Zachariah should have been glad that that greater angel didn't come to visit because if they were afraid with Gabriel, they might have been really afraid with the greater angel when he's dead.
Michael.
So you would say that an angel is timeless, angels?
Yes. A number have been created and there would are no more.
So we did not become angels. The angels are already created.
Yes. There are no more, you know, your grandmother may have said, when I die, I'm going to go up and I'm going to be your guardian angel. Well, God may use her, but to help you in your walk, but she's not going to be an angel. That's not a path that human beings take. Any disagreement with that?
A lot of people think that though.
A lot of people do think that.
Well, it's in the movie Miracle on Thirty Fourth Street. I mean, geez.
And we can use the term angels so far as kindness, power, energy, you know, goodness, sharing God's word. But yeah, not, it's, it's not really an angel that we become. So I guess according to the Bible.
They come to people, there was a man that got something and he, they named something in honor of his daughter who had passed away and she said, he said she's an angel now and you can't say, oh no, not really, you can't.
Not, not at a funeral anyway. I, I had people do that too at funerals, you know, and, and you're just like, we want to remember them. Yeah, I mean, yeah, you'd go, it's not the time to discuss.
And, and this, this is, this is a theological nicety. It's, it's true. But it's not one of those things that, you know, you have to go to, go to the mat and fight about. And, you know, does God use people that have already passed or in heaven?
Well, even having all of us ever said, we've been in a situation where somebody stepped in to help us out and we said, oh my gosh, you're mighty. You know, I'm sure you look a general that way. But that was a girl that he fell on. But, you know, and I don't, I, I think the content is meant differently than an actual.
Yeah, you're right. They're, they're talking about their, their helpfulness, their kindness, like
But, but some people at funeral do say that, they really do believe they're an angel. I've had that said more than once at a funeral, they really do think they're an angel, not.
That's the next step. If you make it to heaven, you get your wings and and, you know, uh, not Miracle on Thirty Fourth Street, the one where It's a wonderful life. Every time the bell rings, an angel gets its wings.
Yes, claim.
Well, anybody got anything else they'd like to discuss? Our goal is to be around an hour in this one.
I just remember one time, uh, we lived in Illinois, we knew it, the young couple who was wanting to have children and couldn't. And, uh, they adopted a little one. And soon after, I don't know, two or four months later, they were able uh, and found, uh, with child, two of them, I think. There was, there was much joy that was brought in that household.
Miracles do happen. They continue to happen to this day. You know, Lloyd Hall always talk about, talked about the miracle of a changed life, God working in somebody's life. And curing an addiction that they had struggled with for years and years and years.
Yeah, lady in the church too that had, um, young couple and she was expecting and she had the German measles during her pregnancy and they tried to talk her into her in abortion. Does the child have all kinds of? He said, no, we just felt like in and the child was born fine, perfect. And she said, they saw one of the doctor's reports saying this couple was claiming this is God's doing. And it was a testimony, she said, that's, that's fine, that is what it was. But she said the doctor didn't write it as if he were believing, but he said they were credited with God for the child being born.
They didn't have an explanation, but they didn't believe. Alright, so next week we'll be doing chapter two. And so I'd invite you, if you're able, if you have the opportunity to read chapter two. And would you like me to call you on the phone and read it to you?
Say sure. No, because he might do it.
Well, you said nobody calls you.
Nobody called me.
Why they calls you? You said nobody calls you. No, nobody ever calls you on your phone, so.
I didn't say that, did I?
Well, she was lying because people call her all the time.
And at least this reading the scripture and stuff too is, or having it, because you can do that audio and stuff too, but looking at the scriptures and stuff too, it's fun to again, how God's at work, that speaks to our hearts. And then she shared most of it, from what she reads, she's sharing it in there too, so.
Right.
Pastor Ginny said I didn't have to read it and I could still come.
Like I said, if you, if, if you're able, you can read it.
I can read the big headlines in there, but I can't read the small print.
That's all we do that.
Yeah, do a large print Bible that you can read.
Yes, I do.
So if you like, I could call you and tell you what the scriptures were from.
Well, you can do that if you want to.
My, my number is blocked.
You can call me anytime after five o'clock because I'm not driving at night.
Alright, so next week either here at Trinity and hope to see you back and I'll be better prepared. Maybe I can make everything work. There have been people, they would not have seen the video.
Yeah, yeah.
That was the issue today.
If it worked yesterday, that was one of the things.
Alright, well, let's close in prayer. Would anyone like to, uh, pray? I can sit here a long time.
Oh, grace is God, we are so grateful for the many ways that we've seen you at work before and in the scriptures and you still work today. So we praise you that each one of us is here, that you've called us and that you love us and you care for us. And that you'll use us as well. Now, we may not have a child when we're old, but we have many ways that we could bless and encourage. And so may we see and know that you are with us and really focus on what Christmas is all about as we prepare our hearts during this Advent time to be encouraged and strengthened by you. So we thank you so much that we can come together and continue to learn more, grow and feel your presence. We praise you in Jesus' name.